We're going to go into our regular scheduled City Council member meeting. I'd like to call the order, the City Council meeting of Carthage for October 3rd, 2019. As always, we'll be going by Robert's Rules of Order, so all of our voices, all of your voices will have a chance to be heard very far. May I have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Knappel.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Evil.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes that were sent to you?
Motion approved, seconded.
Any discussion of the minutes from the last public hearing in City Council? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, just then. Consideration of bills over 2,000.
Ms. Jennifer? Yeah, I have, I sent you the city attorney's invoice, and normally you guys wouldn't see two fleet bills at the same time, but the last one came in after the council meeting. So, one of those, we had to go ahead and pay, or we'd have a late fee on it. So, that's why there's two on there for that.
Motion. Seconded.
Okay.
Just question what it is, the what fleet bill?
That's the fuel tickets.
Fuel tickets, okay.
Yeah.
Got you.
Okay, I have a motion and second to pay these bills over 2,000. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion passes. We have, under the citizens' concerns, we have Gabe Powell from the Census Bureau. Say something here.
Yes, Mayor Smith. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you all for letting me come take a few minutes of your time here. I promised when I got on the agenda I would be brief. I'm gonna have a couple days real quick. I counted poorly. I'm here to cover a little bit about the upcoming decennial census count. Did I get it right?
Sure.
You're sorry to go. I've got, I'll pass that down.
Oh, thank you.
I wanted to cover a couple things about, about the census that's coming up. I always, I've only got a few minutes, I always try and get three points across. One, that the census is important. Two, that it's secure and confidential. And three, that it's easy. And what we're really, really trying to do is let everybody know especially how important it is to, to encourage response in local communities. There's $675 billion that are allocated.
Would you like to move it in so you can address us all?
Sure, I would love to. There's $675 billion federal dollars that are allocated annually based on census. That's more than the Department of Defense gets each year. You know, I don't, don't really know what $675 billion of anything is, so I got with the UT Data Center and their director and kind of tried to figure out what does that mean for Tennessee and what does that mean locally. Well, if we look at some of the top five programs in the state of Tennessee for supporting children, if we look at the Child Health Insurance Program, if we look at Medicaid, if we look at a couple of the Title IV Echo Foster Care Adoption Assistance, and then the Child Welfare and Development Fund, if we just look at those five programs alone, 1% undercounting the state costs us, say, $69 million. It's a pretty, pretty substantial amount. There's a, the state gets $32 million in service block grants to help adults and senior citizens with disabilities. If you look a little closer, closer to home, you know, if you start looking in the Upper Cumberland Title I Education Assistance Grants varying from $400,000 to almost $3 million per county. And then when you get down to cities like Carthage here, if you look at state revenue sharing funds, that works out to about $140 a person. And that doesn't sound like that much, but multipliers are pretty significant, you know, when you multiply that and have to start putting a couple zeros on the end. And then guess what? This decennial count is the only time, once every 10 years, that we get to count everyone in the United States. So, we'll, we'll make estimates in between those times, but we, we don't have this opportunity to get it right and count everyone but once every 10 years. So, it's, we're talking about substantial dollar figures, and we're talking about the opportunity to bring other people's money home. You know, I, I just moved back to the upcoming, I grew up here, I've been gone for about 20 years. Finally got Uncle Sam to let me go, so I came home and was looking for something to kind of feel like I had another important cause to tackle, and this came along, and it's, it's the opportunity to start bringing things back and, and getting other people's money to, to work for us. In the city of Gallatin, in 2016, they did their own special census, and they, they had 30,000 people in the, in the 2010 count. And they did a special census because they thought they'd grown enough, spent about $50,000 of their own money. In 2016, when the number settled, in 2017, they had 40,000 people. Substantial growth, but that made a $3 million difference in their federal contributions the next year. So, so it adds up pretty quickly. And so even, you know, and coming from, coming from a small town in Tennessee, just down the road, I understand what even $100, or $500, or $1,500 can do to help, to help everyone out. So, so the census is very important. It's safe, secure, and confidential. I like to really stomp my foot on that one, because that seems to be the biggest drawback we get to people wanting to complete is they just don't trust the government for whatever reason. They don't want to give out their information, and then everybody's got a different reason, but it really boils down to that. And we make, make it a point, and by law in the Census Bureau, that we do not share your personal information with anyone, your name and address. It doesn't go to the IRS, it doesn't go to the Department of Justice. There's even history of presidents, President Roosevelt, Roosevelt, when he was leaving office, asked about information about a neighborhood, and the Census Bureau would not give him those people's specific information because it's against the law. Your name, address, that kind of personal information is exempt from the Freedom of Information Act. It just doesn't get shared. So, we do everything we can. And even in this day and age, if you look at what people are doing with social media and being able to match it to other people's information, like HIPAA information that's supposed to be protected, and they're figuring out ways to do that, well, the Census Bureau did its own study with 2010 data and started, we're working to add really false data sets in there to confuse those people that are trying to do that, to make sure that when we get this 2020 count, they aren't able to tease that information out. So, it's, it's really important for people to understand, we're doing everything humanly possible to protect their information, so they can feel confident filling, completing their census, so that we can start getting those federal dollars coming back to us. Luckily, it's easier than ever. It's only nine questions. There's only five of them you have to fill out for every person in your household, their name, their date of birth, their age, their, their date of birth and age are probably the same thing, their gender, their race and race, and their ethnicity, and that's it. And you can do that online this year, so if you've got a smartphone, if you've got a library that connects to the internet, you can do it that way, or you can call it in. It's supported in 13 languages, an automated version, and it's got 59 languages that you can actually get additional assistance in. So, it's working, and they're, they're trying to scale that up to 100 languages. There's no reason for anyone not to be able to respond based on ability. I saw on the sign that someone's here with, of Sherman's Felt Middle Districts. Hey, we've got a great partnership with you through Mark Marley, and, and then through the UCA HRA going to commodity distribution, we're getting the word out that way. So, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities out there for, for you all to touch, even just one person or two people. There's some information in those folders about how it's important to count young children. Think we missed over a million children under five in the U.S. And so, there's some information that kind of explains, well, you know, if you've got a kid that lives here part of the, with mom part of the time and dad part of the time, how did you do that? So, if there's questions about that, my card's in there, I can help with that. If you just want to post a flyer outside your office, or we've got, you know, we've got, I'm best, I'm best described, I think, as a technical advisor, so if you've got a message you want to get out or a place you want to put it, I can get you a 30-second public service announcement, I can get you a script for it, I can get a 15-second, I can get one line to post on social media, all of it's pre-made, so it just takes very little effort on your part. So, anything we can do, working with all the county school systems to try and get this in front of students in March. So, there'll be a mail or go out in March that invites everyone to respond, and that's when you'll, 95% of the country will get a postcard that lets them respond online or over the phone. Some of our communities that just don't have internet or phone access or don't believe in it will go ahead and get paper copies right away. But if there's, you know, we're, we're working really hard to count people experiencing homelessness and different things like that, so, you know, if you know some populations like that, that's another thing that you can give me a call. I won't do anything about it personally, other than make sure it goes to the right people to, to be able to go out and, and count them when that time comes. But it's, it's an important cause, and it's something that you all have the ability to touch people in your community and be able to help your community in a, in a pretty, pretty easy way. You know, the city of Gallatin spent $50,000 to do that count. 2020, we get to do it for free, in the sense that the federal government's paying for it, so the more people we count then, the more of those dollars we bring home.
Does anyone have any questions?
If you think of any, you've got my card, if I can help in any way.
So, if we're understanding, the more people who actually do the census, the more we have access to grants and things in the same.
Any, just about any federal grants that you're going to apply for, that are, if it requires population data, it will require census data. And there's a lot of those that, that go out even without you applying, they're allocated, whether it's the Title I Education Grants, different things that are applied, you know, based on that data, even if you're not applying for the grant yourself. And then that triples down. It's, it's so hard to figure out when you're talking about, you know, the $700 billion, how much of it makes it down to the city level, so it's, we're still trying to work through those specific dollar figures.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, it's time for our different reports, so we'll start with the mayor's report. Just a little bit of an update here, our, our traffic signal out at I-25 and Industrial is now fully up and running again. The pressure was fixed, we didn't have to replace it, which was good, they went out and were able to, to tweak it somehow and use the one that was there, so we saved
A little over $40,000.
Pretty good savings on that. Of course, our brush pickup is again next Monday, the first Monday of each month, so please, everybody have your, your brush out by the side, not in the road, but by the side of the road if you have any you'd like to, to give away. We had a very interesting event on Monday. We, of several communities around, we were able to get a music video here in Carthage, it was between several communities, and they decided on us here. We brought in Tanya Tucker and Brandy Carlisle for their music video that really features and highlights downtown. When this is released, they're going to send us a link to it that I'll put on our website and on our Facebook. I think you'll be surprised, we got to watch a little of the filming, and, and it's really highlighting the downtown businesses quite, quite a bit. Some, to the extent that some of them are 360 degrees around and around, and you keep seeing the bank and the churches and everything, so it's quite nice, I think, and it's going to be in black and white, so it's going to be quite artsy. At the same time, CBS was here. CBS was following her around because they're going to do an interview on the CBS Morning Show, Ms. Tucker's comeback here. And that will be airing, and they got all kinds of shots of downtown business area here in Carthage, so that'll be more. I think in one day, we got no telling how many thousands of dollars' worth of free publicity for our little town. And yesterday, another good thing happened, a member of the Tennessee Film Commission came to Carthage, and we rode her around and showed her all the possible location sites that could be used here in town. She's going to go back and put that on their website, so if people are looking for a beautiful courthouse, we've got it on there. If they're looking for an alley that could double for a Chicago tenant area, we've got that also. It's amazing what she picked up and the things riding around that I never would have thought of creatively. One other great thing we have, we're going to try flea market here. We've got a subcommittee of Valerie Upchurch is heading this, and several people on board. We're looking at November 2nd, which is a Saturday, at the walking track across from the swimming pool. There'll be arts and crafts and all kinds of good things, food trucks, a couple of porta potties in case we need that. Of course, everybody has to have those. We were, we're going to need a lot of people to come on board and volunteer to help with this by the time it gets near what we're doing, but please get the word out. We have vendors of any kind, if it's arts, crafts, music, if people want to sit around and strum and play music. If you want to, if you've got a good food truck, bring it out. If you've got a good fried pie, bring it out. Anything in the booth will be 20 feet across, literally going around the inside of the walking track out there. So, it's a good way to use our park and get out and have fun.
What's the charge, the fee for it?
It's the, it's our regular, what we call the
Peddler.
Peddler permit, and it's $20, but that's good for a year. So, once they get it, any other events they can need that permit, they'll be able to use it. So, we have more than one of these, I think they, the name they came up with was the Carthage Market Fest, because it includes so many things. So, if we have more than, maybe we'll have one each month for a while, if this works out. So, that one permit allows them to do any of that.
Do the vendors like it Walton days now? Do they have to have one of those permits?
Well, they, yes. And that hasn't been upheld in the past, but yes, we have to, and so
So, they did this time?
They didn't. They charged, they charged, but it wasn't
The chamber charges.
Chamber charged, but
Nobody came down, they have to come down here to get a peddler's permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But if they got something at Walton, if they were, had gotten it, then they could use it for this flea market, they could use it for a year. But apparently, that hasn't been done in the last couple of years, but, but it was supposed to be. That's, and it's not just Carthage, it's a statewide ordinance.
Would they segregate it out like antiques and crafts and that sort of thing?
We're, we're in the process of discussing that, because some people said yes and some said no, just put them all together. What do you, do you have thoughts about that? Or you can, we can share that, I mean, we'll, we'll think about it, but
The city organizing this, or is it just?
There's a subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation, but yes, everybody's going to have to come back on board and help with this.
Citizens Committee, then?
Yeah, it's a Citizens Committee. And Valerie Upchurch is the chair of that subcommittee. So, any great ideas you have, there's, I think there's eight or 10 members altogether. I don't have the list right here. And it's a mixture of men and women, all ages on there. But we will, they will need, as it gets a little closer, because we're talking about pretty soon, we're going to need everybody out there helping, if you will, because if this becomes something that, you know, if it's a good thing, it's going to bring a lot of people, again, into Carthage who eat, maybe stay overnight, who knows what they'll do, be a little more, and a little more recognition of that area of town, too, which is very important. Okay, then, the last thing, because there's a lot of talk about people being able to express what they want to say, and maybe Facebook is not always the best way to do it, it's always better to talk in person if we can, so next Monday night, I've invited any business owners, any residents of the city, come to City Hall and have a conversation about how do we make this town even better than it is. And that's at 5:30, Monday night, October 7th, right here at City Hall, so please, please come with your ideas. That's, that's kind of what this is all about, it's the communication. So, 5:30, Monday night, tell your friends, neighbors, cats, dogs, whatever, bring them, bring them, and we'll, we'll try to discuss a few things. All right, that's my report. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report?
I don't have a report, I have a couple items for discussion, but I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. Chief Davis, police report?
You skip me every time.
I am so sorry. Every time. I'm so sorry. Are you all here?
I am on there, but that's
Okay, no, chief, wait, no, it's city court recorder, I'm so sorry.
I'm wasting my time.
I am so sorry. Jennifer, it's all yours, I apologize.
Well, I just have a couple things. One of them was Stansel Electric, but you already covered that. There's a $150,000 CD that ends this month, so I'm going to put it up to bid, just wanted to let you guys know that. Currently, it's at Wilson Bank, so, but we'll send out letters to all the local banks and bid that out. And I realized, Cole, this afternoon, you had asked me at the planning commission meeting to start sending those minutes to you guys. I forgot all about it, but I'll send those minutes to you guys.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Now, chief. Now, chief. Thank you. Our police chief.
I don't have much. We ended up purchasing those firehorns, we've got most of them already in stock, still waiting on just a few of them to get here. Everybody knows there was a bank robbery last week. Suspects are in custody, and they looked after good. Shout out to the Madison County Sheriff's Department, Tennessee Highway Control, Boise Police Department, FBI, dispatchers, Wilson County Sheriff's Department, any other law enforcement agents who helped us out a lot. Everybody worked together as a team, and it really just worked out about as good as it possibly could, and nobody got hurt, and we worked out good, so.
Is there anything else you want to bring for the council?
It's an item.
I think it's at the very
Okay, all right.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, okay, great.
Burn your mayor.
Whatever.
Other than that, I believe I didn't.
Okay.
We skipped the attorney.
Oh, no, he didn't. He didn't have a report.
No, no, he didn't have a report. Only did it for all
It's just
Mr. Rice from Public Works. Do you have anything for us? No, okay. Nothing, all right.
You answered all of everything I had.
Okay. You're going to pick up the brush for us, so that's wonderful. All right, fantastic. Monday, all right. Ms. Teresa, the water plant.
Just to report that Park Time is on his third week, and everything's going well.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, Rust Ricky, yes?
Just to report that Steve had surgery this morning on his knee.
That's right.
He's doing fine, he got on about 9:30.
Wonderful.
Doing good, and, and our security gate got started on Tuesday.
Fantastic.
Could be finished, maybe a week or two.
All right, very good.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Chief Hyatt, is he out there? Our fire chief?
Just, just what I submitted, mayor.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate everything all of you do very much. Now, we go into the grant reports, and as you all know, our grant, you grant writers are with UCDD, Upper Cumberland Development District, and instead of all three coming tonight, Mr. Allison Fox, I don't know if you've met yet, who's going to be working on the walking trail and some other things, is going to report in toward the others, so we'll see.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so I'll start with the walking trails. So, this is the TDEC recreational trails program grant to pave the walking trail at Carthage City Park. So, for the, the grant contract is still in the pre-execution phase, so our final budget is under review by TDEC, and then it's in the approval process, and once it's been approved, the grant contract will be executed, and the project at two weeks will move forward. So, that's where we are with that, we're still in the execution phase. We have procured a new engineer, the city went through the engineer procurement process, and qualifications were received from engineers, and Mid-10 Engineering Company out of Lafayette was chosen as the new project engineer, and I believe Mid-10 has submitted their contract agreement to be executed with the city, and so once that's executed, they'll move forward with the creation of final plans and specifications on that project. So, we're at a good point on that. Do you have anything else on that one?
Any questions about?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that one's still pretty early. And the next one is the CDBG facade grant, this is to do facade improvements to the downtown, and this one's a little long, so I'm just going to read this. This one's administered by Virginia Alexander with our office. So, she said the transfer of the grant administration is complete. Virginia has organized all the files, both physical and electronic, and then, these are the updates on the individual facade projects of the individual buildings. 323 Main Street, which is the Hebert property, this project is under construction, all bids have been completed, and the work should be completed within the next month or two. Virginia has been in touch with multiple property owners regarding their awning projects. She is waiting to hear back from a few more to determine the colors and styles before officially sending out the bid request. These do not have to be formally bid, however, she did meet with two awning companies to discuss the feasibility of removing the flat aluminum awnings, and there did not appear to be any issue with that. Virginia is working with the state historic preservation officer regarding some work, some facade work on 316, 216, 212, and 104 Main Street to determine what was sent in from the previous grant administrator before moving forward on those projects. We have to comply with, you know, historic, the state historic regulations. Virginia is working with the health center to collect bids on their door project. Mr. Wilkerson's property has been formally bid, and we are waiting on some paperwork from the lowest bidder before recommending the award for that one. And then she says we are taking informal bids on the facade portion of Ms. Holloman's building, and Virginia has sent an email to the mayor regarding, regarding the awning color to see if what they are interested in would work within their color scheme, and I guess she's waiting to hear back from more of that, so.
I don't
I don't personally know any more on that one, but if there are any questions
There's a particular, the committee that put this all together had a color scheme, and we're trying to see if it fits in with that color scheme.
So, that's all I've got on the facade, and then the last one is the ARC grant, Appalachian Regional Commission, grant for the Turkey Creek water tank replacement, and that one is administered by Tommy Lee with the Development District. And the current status, Tommy has checked with ARC and confirmed that the notice to bid was issued on May 23rd, 2019, which means that the plans and specifications have been approved by ARC, and the town is free to bid for the construction of the water tank. However, depending on what you all decide to do, the next steps are either to send out the bid notices, the advertisements to bidders, or if the town wants to select a new engineer and submit new plans and specs, the request for qualification process has already been done, but, I mean, no new engineer's been chosen yet, but if the new engineer is chosen, okay, since the town has, has a set of plans and specs that have already been approved, any money spent on design will be at the expense of the town, and I don't know if you want to explain a little more about that situation?
Well, it's, because of the situation that we have with a former engineer, and we're deciding if we want to go ahead and replace him with, there actually was an evaluation done, I think there were five that responded to the RQ, and one kind of came in ahead because they've actually done work with our city, and I think they did the former water tank out there. But because the former grant writer had applied for some monies that came, but we, we haven't paid the engineer yet, because we're waiting to see if it's the correct amount that we should be paying them. So, it's a little confusing at this point. There's supposed to be a meeting, you want to tell them a little bit more about it?
Yeah, and with respect to, to Mr. Warren, we do have a meeting scheduled with him and his attorney for Monday afternoon. This is one of the topics to be discussed. His attorney has said that they'll cooperate with the transition on this project as much as possible, but as you know, we've got a few other issues outstanding with them. It may be that it's in the best interest of the town to go ahead and complete the project using the current plans that have already been prepared, but we'll know more, I think, after our meeting, I'll need to see how exactly that would work, if we could somehow still use those plans, but maybe have a new engineer do supervision of construction, that might be an option, but it's still a little bit unknown right now.
Okay. And then I guess, did you want to talk about the other park grant? We applied in August for a, a park for playground and adult fitness equipment at Carthage City Park. It's about a million-dollar project with no local match, but it's a very competitive grant. It's through the Blue Cross, Blue Cross Health Foundation. So, we submitted that, we probably won't know if it's funded until January, likely, again, that's a statewide grant program through Blue Cross, but it'll be awesome if Carthage can get it, but it's super competitive, so we're waiting to hear back on that.
Regarding that grant, is it, are there specific, like, specifications that they got to do at the playground, or they
Yes, it's, to be honest, it's very much a branding initiative for Blue Cross, and so there's
Yeah, sure.
They work with a specific company, and they have, you know, their own line of, of equipment, but it's, it would be like an all-inclusive children's playground, which has a solid surfacing for all, you know, handicap accessibility and all that kind of
It's a million dollars for the whole grant program, or a million dollars for this specific
This project, it wasn't a million exactly, it's something around there.
Around for just this project?
Yeah.
And it's no matching?
No matching, yeah. It would be a full gift to the city if that happens, but...
Okay.
The previous, I think the program's been around about two years and the previous awards have been to Chattanooga and Memphis and bigger cities.
I was gonna say, is it gonna be based on population?
It's, well, they don't say that, but for them, you know, they're looking for where their branding will be the best.
Counselor, you said?
Back to the downtown facade grant.
Yes.
Did you say about the metal awnings, that they would not take them down? That was a big question in our meeting.
They would take them.
And I just have this report from someone else. I don't personally know, but it says that there did seem to be an issue with removing the awnings, is what she said. They will be able to remove the...
Okay, they would. 'Cause that was a big question about...
Right. They had two different sets of people who came out and looked at it and they both said they could take them down, so.
Yeah, 'cause you're gonna have to get somebody else to do it.
Is there anything we can do as a city to help with that playground grant?
Probably not.
Okay.
Not at this point. The mayor was able to get several support letters, so we did, Carthage had a lot of support letters.
Okay, good.
So that's, that's great. But honestly, it's one of those, it's a very corporate grant program, so I don't know if there'll be, you know, any follow-up questions to the community. But if you get a call from Blue Cross asking about it...
I will certainly, I will write over it, yes. But in the interim, we're sort of thinking we may go around to the banks and different businesses and just see if some of those would like to contribute and put their name on smaller parts of the park. So if we don't get this, we would have maybe a backup plan for that.
And once your walking trail is paved with this other trail grant, you know, that's gonna really, I think, probably get some seen going for the park.
Directly.
And there's a lot of park grants out there that you'd be eligible for, so.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions about that? Okay. Okay, we go to the unfinished business? Okay, the good news is that we did hear back from TDEC's state revolving fund loan. We did get on the priority list for the drinking water, so that means we will be eligible to apply for some of these better loans at the, with principal forgiveness and lower interest rates. We will probably send out an RFQ soon now for the Futural Water Line first, and then we'll, the sewer portion of this, we have to check back. We were qualified last February, but I've gotta check and see if we have to wait now till this February for that part. But for the drinking water, we can go ahead and do an RFQ and get an engineer on board to finish that water line.
So is that the one you're talking about between Third and Main? That's Futural Water Line connection?
Goes down Futural Avenue to Third and goes, keeps going down Futural, but it comes up Third.
But it comes up across and connects in that title?
Correct.
Okay.
So we can now apply for that better loan. So just to let you know, we have talked about before, when that was estimated by our prior engineer, he estimated it at $412,000. The engineer who, at no charge, applied for us for this, estimated it at $135,000. So we saved quite a bit off the bat, I guess. Very honestly, because they did it at no charge and it's the same company that's done a lot of lines, it's water management again, they might be the person or the company that would be the best to go ahead and get this over and take care of it once we get the loan. So we'll let you know, well, step by step on this, but I think it's gonna be fairly soon now to get this started. Okay. And the same thing, the request for qualifications for the sewer line, we'll send something out for that. But again, we have to check and make sure that we can get one of those priority loans in that part. So I've sent an email to them and they're supposed to be getting back to me today, maybe by tomorrow, but let us know on that. We did check on the fire hall potential grant, the CDBG, and I always say that wrong? Did I say that the right way?
CDG?
Yes. Apparently won't be out those till next year, some of these, but for the, maybe others that we're gonna check on about that, so.
CDBG will be due in February.
February, okay. So we're working toward it, Joe, slowly. We're putting out there, so we're gonna do this for you, I promise.
We're gonna.
Alrighty. They need a place to put two of their fire engines and we're gonna get that as much as we possibly can. So, okay, Stevens Building. The electrical has been finished and part of it, the performance hall, the area, of course, now we have to have restrooms in order to use it. So we had it walked off by Mr. McHenry, our building inspector, and basically what we will need is on one side for the men, there will be two facilities there. One of it which has to be handicap access, so it's, I think it's a five or six feet turning radius, and then they'll have at least one sink area. And the other, there will be three facilities for the women, one of which will be handicap access and two sinks in that area. He's marked it off and we're gonna have three different folks come up and look at it. Right now, every builder in town has got their hands full with stuff, but we've got, I've contacted three, contacted Stephen Lish, Bill Huffines, and Russell Robertson. And they all said they'd try sometime next week to come up in and walk it around and just give us estimates. They can't, didn't even when they would even be able to do it.
So you'll have a floor plan, like what the layout for the restrooms are?
Yes, I think I sent that to y'all. Didn't I not send that?
I think I've seen it.
I don't remember seeing it.
Okay. Yeah, on one side it's gonna be five. Les, can you describe it better than me? You kind of, how the floor plan would look for those two over here on the windows?
The wing is gonna be on the right and the wing is gonna be on the left.
There you go, see?
Yeah, I'm asking if I privacy, just open the door and buy us some.
No, no, no.
You want to even sit down?
There you go. That's it.
You don't like though? Is it a lot of target?
If you look at the performance hall, you know, there's a wall kind of area at the back of the door, so you go through that door on this side, and it's already petitioned off for the women's side, so you won't have to do anything there. You'd go in that door, there'd be three facilities and two sinks. It's, I've got the plan and if you don't mind waiting, I'll go get it for you. Alright, I'll email it to you. I thought I emailed y'all.
You did, I just saw it.
Okay, so there, show them. I knew I did that. It's, can you bring that up so we sort of see it? It's a real, it's a very rough draft of the whole thing.
So you go in and there's...
But once those are finished, then we can use it for all kinds of arts, art exhibits, music, whatever.
Have you started checking into any grants for the restaurants?
I put the word out, we haven't found any just for restrooms yet, but Allison, maybe you can put that on our to-do list, if there are grants just for restrooms that would include handicap accessible.
For where?
For our Stevens Building up here. We have to add some restrooms in order to use it.
Okay, I don't know if any grants for, in parts, there are grants for restrooms?
I haven't found any so far. I'd like to ask the...
In Gainesboro, we piggybacked that with a grant for the amphitheater, and that's really what went a long way towards us getting it. So, you know, we might need to look at piggybacking with another...
Right, was that a tourism grant?
It was. It started at, well, at the RC. It wasn't supposed to, but it did.
Okay, well, I put the word out to several people and they're kind of, the same thing just for the bathrooms, but that's a great idea, if we can piggyback, that might make it work. What else here?
One more possible.
Okay, we get to Mr. Warren's invoices and information about the grit chamber. And Mr. Moore, would you like to tackle that one?
Yeah, just briefly, again, it's another item that we're gonna discuss on Monday. I have reviewed the invoices and all the contract documents leading up to that agreement, which, just briefly, originally was approved, I think, in November, or at least it's dated November of 2015. So it's different than some of the other invoices we're dealing with, because, I mean, it's a done project, all the money's already been paid and closed. You know, we're still looking into the issue with respect to the recommendation and approval to install the grit chambers, but, and we'll touch on it with Mr. Warren on Monday. But I'm glad to answer any questions anybody has about the contracts or how that was handled, but it's a little bit different situation in that it's one that has kind of been done and paid, and so any sort of claim that the town would have would be, you know, opening up an old project rather than one that's still winding up.
It sort of seems like we have two issues going on, is the outstanding invoices, and then we have a big question about almost $500,000 that was paid for something that pretty well we discovered was not even necessary. I will say that I actually call HydroDyne, the company that makes these things and brought it up to be installed, and even they said these things are made for sewer plants.
Are we seeking to kid some money back on this?
Well, I think that's gonna be part of the discussion.
Well, and I told the mayor this, and I think, based on what I know now, what I think the town would need to have to seriously consider moving forward with anything along those lines would be to have an expert, another engineer, who's willing to come in and look at that project and basically testify there's no reasonable basis that that should have ever been recommended and installed. I, from, this is just completely, an attorney reading about wastewater plants and water plants and that equipment, it does seem that typically those grit chambers are used for wastewater. But there is, I mean, even I found some indication online that those filters can be installed anywhere where there's a pump, to protect those pumps. So, and Mr. Warren did submit a pretty detailed facilities use plan to the town before that contract was entered into, that explains the justification for that. So in order to do that, that's something that, again, the town's gonna have to overcome and find an expert that's gonna give some basis to make a claim.
Ricky, can you add anything to the history of this? 'Cause you were there and you think, said possibly to them it wasn't needed at the time.
Only thing I know about it is that it was to, it was to be put in to get the mud off of us from the water plant.
But that's not what it's designed for, is it?
It's designed to help us with the mud. Theresa would send it to us, what, two types of mud, and then, and then twice a year we would get quite a bid, when she would clean out some basins.
Right. But I think the understanding from everything that, I think I sent y'all some of the things, but you can go online, just Google it, it basically always comes up, it's for sewer plants. That's what they're designed for.
We're gonna look at the $20,000 piece plywood for the flume, we're gonna look at the potable water pumps that were installed in the river water situation. Like, I'm just wondering, like, these are things that are like, I don't, I don't see how we overlook them once again and again and again and again. I mean, these are things that are, you know, very obvious. And it's a lot, costs a lot of taxpayer money. So I don't know if we can look into those as well.
You will address everything possible.
Yeah, again, I think you do have to eat, and I understand, you know, kind of the cumulative effect of each of those projects, but you do have to separate them out, I think, and look at each one and say, okay, is, is there some basis that we can make a claim to recover some of that? So I think he can claim, make a claim against his insurance, basically. Well, to do that, you're essentially gonna have to file a lawsuit for him to make a claim against. Now, having said that, we'll talk about the sign situation in just a minute, there's another option apparently, but again, from my perspective, I think the next step, what I would need to see, or would suggest that I would need to see, is an engineer for the town to look at each of those items and to say, give an expert opinion, no, clearly that wasn't appropriate, and the town should be reimbursed for that, it shouldn't have had to pay.
I think there's someone I've spoken with that might be willing to do that. Unless someone else has an engineer that would be willing.
Might be good to get a couple people, so that way it's two people. Two people's opinions instead of just one versus another, it'll hold up there. Because as you can imagine, not only is Mr. Warren gonna justify, but also, you know, they would have another expert as well as within.
And would that person have access to Mr. Warren's reports as to what he saw the necessity?
I think that's what would need to happen, yes, for them to review all of that before they gave an opinion.
Okay. Are we even in the statute of limitations to file that?
The, again, the contract is dated November of 2015, and so there's a serious question of whether or not, you know, we could even get within a four-year on the statute of repos for that.
Are you talking about the grit chamber?
Talking about the grit chamber.
That was just last year, wasn't it?
Well, there was, see, that was another thing, there was amendment to it that was passed, I think, in 2017. The project was completed, so there are definitely some statute limitation issues.
When was it? Put it up there, Theresa. Was it last year? When did they put it?
We're talking about the paperwork. I don't know about the contract and everything.
We might be able to push the statute of limitations to completion date though, too, because, and do we pay, do we, whenever we pay and finish out?
No, I think what Mr. Moore is going to do is just do a semi-pre-settlement discussion. If anything comes out of it, he'll bring it to, we'll bring it, or whoever will bring it to the council and discuss it before anything happens.
Right. And again, my hope or goal between now and next meeting, obviously see what happens with the meeting with Mr. Warren next week, hopefully have something to present to you at the next board meeting. And if not, if we don't feel like we're making progress on that, to be able to get some expert opinion on particularly the large project, so we can, and that's the, actually the big item that's out there, to know whether that's even a possibility to move forward.
It's kind of a shame with that much money matching at 2080, we could have had quite a few projects for this town, so hopefully we can find a solution to this, perhaps everyone. Okay, the next one is replacement of the downtown historic Carthage sign by Witt Signs.
So I did speak with Mr. Witt, and he still, of course, did not admit any responsibility for the damage to the sign or the accident that caused the sign, but he did say that he would file a claim with his insurance provider to see if they would provide compensation or some reward for that. So he's going to contact me as soon as he has some feedback. He did say that they, an investigator may contact the town to get more information to look at the sign, but again, we'll have more detail in a report next few months. But he did, he did seem willing to work to try to come to some solution on it.
Okay, great. Okay. Okay, then our next item, we go into the different ordinances that we had an earlier public hearing about. So the first one is, second reading of ordinance P-20190814, parentheses, 1-2, titled, "An Ordinance to Update Sections of and Correct Errors in the Previous Ordinance Number 459 to amend the official, to amend the official zoning code of the town of Carthage, Tennessee." Dr. Duke, again, would you just briefly, as we did in the discussion prior, tell us about this?
Essentially, this ordinance replaces the ordinance that actually did pass by deprocess and last time around, and plus it'd be, it's about allowing a tattoo parlor, tattoo piercing parlor's in a particular zone. And so there was several things. We actually did find a signed copy of the ordinance in a stack of papers somewhere. She found it, I didn't find it. Well, that was yesterday we found those. But even at that, the minutes never shown that it was passed. And even if it was passed, it was passed in the wrong section of, it would be under use permitting, which it wouldn't fit under use permitting, it would have to be under special exemption. So anyway, this ordinance basically clears all that up and puts it in there, so the people that want to bring a tattoo parlor and a piercing in establishment, they can come before the board is open to appeals, and that would be special use permitting. Ninety-nine point, ninety-nine percent of those people pass fine without any problems with systems across the whole zone. So that's what this ordinance is all about.
Do I hear a motion to accept this on second reading?
I'll make it.
Okay, motion made. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, not, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed? Okay, so it does pass, top to one. Okay, the second is, the second reading of ordinance P-20190814, parentheses, 2-2, titled, "An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Code of the Town of Carthage, Tennessee to Allow Municipal Planning Commission to Review Site Plans for Conformity to the Zoning Code." And Dr. Duke, would you address that again, please?
I'll make it. This ordinance, this, rather lengthy, it's 12 pages, it had to be to fit into the, to make our codes correct. Actually, this ordinance, we had a prob, we've been having a problem with things getting a permit from the building inspector and that it not matching ours zoning code, okay? And so this ordinance basically is such that anything other than a one or two family dwelling, the site plan has to come before the plan commission to make sure it fits our zoning code, and along with going to the building inspector, who apparently at this point doesn't have any, doesn't want to do anything with our zoning code, he doesn't... He doesn't look at that. So this is making sure that passes our zoning code along with getting the building codes. So this basically just says it has to come to the planning committee and look at it and make sure that the site plans meet. Now, and again, that's for everything except one and two family dwellings. One and two family dwellings at this point still directly to the building inspector, doesn't come to the planning commission. But that's what this ordinance is about.
Do I hear a motion to pass this on the second reading?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimously. The next is second reading of ordinance CCO-2010905, parentheses, 1-1, to create a new Title 15, Chapter 5, and amend Section 16-110 of the Municipal Code Regarding Parades and Special Events Within the Town. And that's, what can you do? Would you like to address that?
So this is the special events permit ordinance that we've talked about for the last couple of meetings. I apologize, but I hope you each saw the email. I did an updated version with a few changes today that were based upon some recommendations that MTA's attorneys had made in reviewing a prior draft of the email that I thought were helpful to maybe avoid some potential problems in the future. Specifically regarding things that weren't originally intended to be covered by this ordinance, and I still don't think would be, but things like a spontaneous demonstration or some other special event that was put on that might have First Amendment protections that we wouldn't want to try to restrict. So I highlighted that in the draft that I sent you today. I'm glad to go through each of those changes if you'd like, or if you would like to just ask questions. Of course, this was the ordinance that originally was set up for the mayor to review these applications. And then on first reading, it was changed so that all of them would come before the city council. Having made that change, it then became unnecessary to have an appeal to the city council. So those provisions were removed. And it's stated in the ordinance, but also just by law, any decision by this board, the appeal from that would be that the Chancery Court, a writ of certiorari. That's really just a procedural change. The one substantive change that I did want to put out is at the last section of 16505, that subsection 12. Again, this was based upon suggestions from MTA's for more definite standards for the issuance. So instead of trying to create some more definite standards without any input from the council, what I put in there was that basically, if this ordinance were to pass, the mayor, the chief of police, the fire chief would develop basically a policy for standards and then present that to the council later that could be approved by resolution. So again, that was my way of kind of addressing that issue.
Like a written SOP4, basically doing a written SOP for town events or parades.
Yeah, it's written out. Just general parameters, like saying what we would approve, special event permits, you know, Monday through Saturdays, not later than 10:00 PM, or some standards like that. Areas of town, for example, that might be designated for special events, certain streets and certain areas, but maybe not just anywhere within the town, things like that, that we can adopt as part of a policy to use for reviewing applications later.
That, you were talking about First Amendment, you know, just like spontaneous protests, things like that. What was the changes on that? Because that's a good point that they really didn't brought up.
Yeah, well, and as we talked about a little bit, we already, we left intact the section in the ordinance, the current section in the ordinance regarding parades. I think most. If there is some sort of a special event that somebody wants to hold a political rally on an issue, for example, and wanted to have an event, it might be treated a little bit differently than a special event that's done by the chamber, for example, and could be expedited just so that the town is not in any way limiting free speech rights on that type of issue.
And that covers that?
It does. Yeah, I think so.
What about like commercial events? People still allow to have commercial events? Like if somebody wanted to, you know, like the music video, we're going to have to issue a permit for something like that?
Yeah.
It's like a workout.
And we don't have anything for that in place currently. And this ordinance doesn't allow for a special event permit for commercial use.
Right.
So that, if that's something the council wants to address, you know, if there is, anytime you don't have a regulation, there's a question about, well, how do you do that?
In terms of commercial use, do you mean things that would bring money into a commercial, like sell or even would sell things?
Well, there's two different, I think Matt may have been talking about like something that's not.
Like Monday where we blocked off the street.
Yeah.
She's selling her music off of that.
Right.
The way it reads right now, I guess technically she couldn't, you know, like, would just kind of, it just kind of happened.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
I don't think it would be qualified as a special event the way a special event is defined. But so then the question is, do you want to have some regulations in place for how you handle? Some cities do, particularly larger cities do have specific ordinances in places for, you know, road closures for filming and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I think it's important to have an SOP4, things like that for downtown businesses. Because, and I thought it was pretty neat, we were out there watching it half the day, but it did, like, it showed a lot of businesses down there and things like that.
But on the other hand, it was checked out prior and there is this, so guess please do it. And it brought a lot of money into town.
Well, I'll just, I'm just going off of four businesses contacting me. One of them closed early, a lot of them lost money.
Yeah.
And they were alerted, they were alerted two days before it happened. And like, for example, you know.
Were you alerted in the week at Thursday?
I've got two businesses and I was alerted on Saturday night.
I, no, I called, I think it was your specific building, the building you closed. This came up very spontaneously.
What I'm saying, again, is I'm not trying to blame or nothing like that. It's fine. It is what it is. I'm just saying have an SOP for future things.
Yeah.
So that way, you know, let's just say, certain businesses want to have specials or call ahead to whoever would be doing it. Or, you know, let's just say Colby wants to do some commercials for certain businesses down there. What's the, you know, what's the differences, you know, and, you know, how much is this costing the city? Things like that, like, are we, are we giving exceptions to certain industries and not other, you know? Let's make sure it's fair across the board.
This is a very spontaneous thing. We knew about it a week and a half before that there were some cities being considered. They came and looked at Carthage. They liked it. Again, we had a million dollar liability insurance policy that included us in case anything happened. They were going to make a small donation to the city for the EMS guys and whoever had come out and helped with it. They catered, not catered, but Rojas probably served about 50 people extra that day. So they made quite a difference, breakfast and lunch, and they were really pleased with the money that brought in. A couple of the extras were hired from here, so that money came back to our city. They bought gas before they left, but I agree.
We're not past.
We're not mad about that.
Let's have a future SOP.
Yes, I agree 100% because we kind of had to green a little permit for they, a little application.
Could happen in the future where they give us a week heads up. We don't want to give up an opportunity. I'm not, again, I'm not opposed. Let's have something, and let's alert the businesses so that they can set up, you know, like. I mean, there might have been businesses that wanted to, you know, they would have said, well, I'm not even paying anyone to come in. There might have been businesses that were closed that wanted to open. You know, there's all kinds of, we don't know as a government what business is, how they operate. So we want to make sure that we're communicating as well as what's going on.
I just want you to know, in this case, we did check every business up and down. Several of them are closed already on Monday, so.
Can we speak to the business owner or the building owner rather than an assistant or a receptionist that doesn't know?
We might. We might open up, pay some money, you know, it would have been good economic, you know what I'm saying? It is fine. I'm glad, you know, but future reference.
Again, it was a one-time, very quick turnover thing and we just felt.
But something about, you know, commercials, like say, I don't know, say you wanted to have a street fest downtown, you know, whatever. Like somebody wants to block, some commercial business wants to come in and block off or a band wants to come in and, you know, play on the courthouse steps, you know, commercially. You know, we need to have something in place for that.
That's fair to everybody.
Because these right now, that's just down front.
Promote more of it.
Right. And I agree with what you're saying. I will, it isn't covered by what we're.
Right, or even the flea markets you're going to have. Maybe they want to come off the walking track and move it to downtown, you know, like to Walton Days. Which, with that, I know that everybody has to have a peddler's license. But can we not do a blanket like for, like Walton Days? Can they not, can Walton Days, can the chamber not buy a blanket certificate for everybody? So we're not doing paperwork for all these different vendors, like, does that make sense? Do you all see what I'm saying on that one? Like, rather than force everybody to buy one, like in the case of the flea market, like, can we just not operate blanket, a blanket certificate?
The thing with it, it's a one-time, once in a year thing, so they can use it if anything.
How, really, but we don't really, I mean, it'd be different. Well, I mean, hopes, dreams are great, but like, we've got to look on what we've got now. I mean, can we just not have a blanket certificate for that one event?
Just so you know, peddler's license, anyone who sets up shop on the side of the road and doesn't have a business license in town has to get a peddler's license. That's just an ordinance that we have. It's an ordinance in our.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, we can.
Like we can do by having umbrella, so you, you give the, you give the peddler's licenses.
We make the chamber commerce. $100 fee or $50 fee and it's like.
They umbrella everybody under that parent level of license.
But then, do they not get to use it after? I don't know. That's not an ordinance.
It's just for that.
Yeah, it'd be just for that.
It's like a special event.
Well, then you'd have to change the ordinance, doesn't it, right now, because of the ordinance?
Pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the peddler's ordinance. I didn't know that. I think, yeah, so we have to look at that.
It's here and it's something statewide. It's not just Carthage.
We will bring it up on our new business list.
I think, I think the purpose for peddlers, from what I understand with MTA's, is that if you don't, if you don't have a business license, if you don't have a business license, excuse me, if you don't have a business license and you're going to sell things in Carthage to compete with people who have to pay tax and a business license, you have to have a peddler's. So if somebody sets up on the side of the road, the police can come up and say, you have a peddler's license or a peddler's permit. Yes, we do. That just shows that we have on record that these people have applied. They know they're competing with other businesses in town. It's a one-day thing. It's for their protection as well as the businesses who have to pay business license and tax.
And it's a great, it's great to have it down at the businesses, like, the more businesses that come down there, it's not, I mean, it is, but it's not competition because people are, you're attracting more people, so more people are going to shop. And all the businesses do that. Great downtown, when Walton Days happens, even though there's a bunch of competition out there.
What we asked you is one thing, what does, doesn't the chamber have pretty hefty fees for having booths there already?
And it's somewhat fun. For the chamber, we don't support our local chamber commerce. And so that takes less tax dollars from tax, you know, and we can, we can use that. Like, I happily voluntarily give them their fees if I have a booth. And so it's more of a, you know. It's worth looking into, I think. It's not, we have to decide, just something to talk about. We can anyway, but something to be thinking about.
I see, yeah, first of all, she does look at that and require an ordinance. I think you can do it. I think it would require an amendment.
Take that back, just in case, take that to the ballpark, you know, and read the back page. No, but I, do you know how hard it is to, there was a couple things on the back that I didn't know if they're included?
There is an exemption for farmers selling produce. No, that's, the ordinance shall not apply to charitable, if it's a charitable organization or public, sponsored, paid, near, church, civic group, et cetera. That is a question of whether or not it would, I think it would most likely still apply to a peddler that's selling at a otherwise open flea market, I'm guessing. That'd be a question, if that flea market was one that was sponsored by the town, does it apply?
By the way, if you have a business license, you don't have to get a peddler's license. So if you came to Walton or anything else and you're already a business, you don't have to get a peddler's license.
I mean, I would say, let's make it easier for commerce to have. That's tax revenue right there. That's, that's good. It's a, commerce is beautiful.
It's not necessarily tax unless we know what you're selling. And normally, knowing what you're selling is if you have a permit from them, that we sell. Otherwise. I always say, how long is the vendor's 48 hours of plan? Whatever, how do we get on this? I'm not sure.
It would be a simple amendment, I think, if they do that.
Just so. So on this line of mine, are we motioning for?
Just one real quick question. I mean, if we did, for instance, the flea market out of the park, it's just, the city puts it on, there are going to be expenses and that would be one way to help offset that expense if you had a peddler's permit if you don't already have a business license. Because we will have to pay the court parties and some of that stuff. So there will be some expense by the city. I guess, do we offset it by having the peddler's permit or just say, no, we don't offset it? That's something to think about as we go forward with this. We can talk about it next time.
So a lot of mine, are we, are we making the second reading with the amendments that you've basically put in there to help cover those bases?
That's my suggestion.
Okay, do we have to, because we've done changes, do we have to have a, another first reading on it or?
I think it's all within a caption.
So I'll motion to approve this ordinance second.
Okay, is there a discussion? I do have a question that was raised by a couple of people. The way it's written now, if, say, somebody brought something to the council and they did or didn't, or somebody wanted to fill what the council did, I'm understanding we have to go to the Chancery Court. Would that be a potentially fairly large financial burden on the city if we had to do that fairly often?
If you had, yes, if you were appealed, you know, fairly often, even, even one is going to be a significant expense. If you deny or request for a permit and it is appealed to the Chancery Court and you defend it, it's not an inexpensive process. Now, you still have that, you don't avoid that even if the way it was originally structured, you just have one more level of appeal. The way it was originally structured, it went to the mayor, that was appealed to the city council, they could rule on it. But even then, if the city council denied it, they could still appeal that decision to the Chancery Court, so.
And the other.
It removes a step.
The other question I just raised by a couple of people, does this make it harder for people to get permits than if they just had to come to the city hall and get a permit? If they have to go to a special council meeting or to a regular council meeting and have to delay when they might want to do this?
Again, the timeframe is laid out in there. It does, it does require a council meeting to award permits.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's, now we go into new business. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Oh, sorry, yes, we, second reading of ordinance CCO-20190905, parentheses, 2-1 to amend Section 111-101 of the Municipal Code to create an exception to the prohibition of drinking alcoholic beverages on public streets during special events approved by the town. And that's, what can you do?
So the, under the current ordinances, the open container ordinance of the town, there's no exceptions for having an open container on a city street that was created for special events within the area of the special event approved by the town under the prior ordinance. Glad to answer any other questions about the content of the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance, 20190905, 2-1.
Motion approved. Some of you worked here earlier. We need to have public discussion on that, public hearing. Is it appropriate to hear any theirs again or just discussion about us?
I think discussion about. I think discussion by the council.
Okay, not everyone was here, but any discussion about this, based on what you heard?
Well, everybody was here.
And because of that, I don't think we need to take the vote tonight.
No.
My opinion is we need to give a little bit better chance for public opinion. We got a lot of messages, people that just saw it today, even though it was available, they just saw it today or couldn't be here today. There was, there's been so much public discussion, public disapproval, that I think we'd be remiss not to hear it all before we make a final decision.
Okay, so would you be willing to, that we aren't taking back the motion from right now, is that what you're sending the motion?
The motion could be withdrawn.
Would you like to withdraw so we can table this, or can we table something about that?
No, there's a motion in the second, I'll have to wait for this motion right now.
We have to call her, withdraw it, I mean, I'd like your motion on table.
Any further discussion?
Are we making a motion to table?
No, we're.
The motion's. Can't, can that be an amendment to the motion to table? I guess that works, isn't a table taking purpose of the motion?
Not when there's a, no, there's a pending motion on there.
I'm sure.
I'm not sure, no.
Look it up, I'm shaking, it might take precedence if there's a table.
I think there may be, you may be right, there may be, well, let's see if there's a motion to.
And then Robert Olson.
I should, you should probably. Thank, thank you for this.
Thank you.
Place that, that it's heard. Delay on the table. And I think that is actually to defer to the, the, the motion to defer.
Table. What do you buy before I get back?
Great.
Okay. We won't take the third seat. Did you get a look at it? Did you back it on any? No, it's just, as you know, it's a, it's a, the motion, we don't, we don't, we don't. Motion to call it what it is. Yeah. You can amend, you can make that amendment.
Okay.
Look, can you stand? Is there something, something to look at, we got a picture, here, we got a standing. Yeah, y'all don't get to sit in the picture that one, I do. Bring the picture. I think that's passed for a passing place. Put on there, that's, buy new chairs for this next. New members. Buy new chairs for your friends. States of the before, must be.
One of those things.
That's one, so. Office, five hundred. Heads up. That's right. Today, the order of chairs. Got any good jokes? I don't have any good jokes for city council. Should call us in city council. We can tell more. Get that short.
I'm not sure if the question, before we have a motion second, on the matter. Motion to table.
Good question. Good question. Look, what did this motion say, if it ever going worse? Yeah, was it, was it that you can, that you can take one, two at the end? Yeah, what's this, you gotta do. That's what we've been doing, right? But if that's how people want to turn it, okay.
I can't find a regular word. I have rubber shoes for, that means.
I like it, I like the motion amendment that does a roll call vote.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, I've gotta get something else right here, let's look through it.
Put the motion on table.
Well, please, please, why don't you say please? Let's take the presence. Sorry about that. Remember, we'll bring it in. Okay. There's a table, it's actual table, it has, in.
Chart.
The chart, yeah.
Yeah.
Just simple.
Yeah, but the question is, if the motion is second on the table, not being withdrawn, if you make a motion to, and you have a hearing on a motion to continue? Or to.
I have part of discussion when you get to have a discussion.
But if you just turn it on.
I have, I have a motion on the table that's withdrawn. Motion to amend, a motion to amend that we do a roll call vote. Still a motion, that's not what Robert Schur's order works. Can't pick and choose what Robert Schur's order we call. I guess we can pick and choose, but we really can't, so we're, it's going on.
We can find, it's all be a priority chart, it's a priority chart, and it has everything listed, it takes priority. There's some back to now in the past.
I just can't remember whether that one is. So just to understand, you want to go ahead and make your motion to amend to allow for a roll call vote now?
So the motion stands.
On the table, and then that motion to amend, your prior motion.
And then have a discussion, well, we'll have a discussion. Yeah, we have a discussion on the amendment motion, and then we go back to discussion on the original motion. I'll second your amendment. We go back to discussion on the.
So we do, so, yeah, so we have to have discussion on the amendment, then we vote on. And actually, that does require a discussion necessarily for the roll call.
Yeah, we just vote on the roll call, and then we go back to discussion after that on the original motion. So it doesn't close the original motion, it keeps the original motion open for discussion, but whatever happens with the original motion, we have a roll call vote. It's following, like, fourth generation amendments, that's what you do, so it looks.
Okay, here. It's a good, it should be. Priority goes up. Right, it's, so I'll bring it.
Is there a subsidiary motion? Under the broad true orders, this type was a subsidiary motion. Is there the priority of those motions? That it lasts a priority motion, it doesn't.
Basically, you can make a motion to table it, so if you want a table discussion, you can make a motion that tables the discussion, and then somebody can second the motion to table the discussion, then we can vote upon table and discussion, and that would basically, like, table it. You can vote to table it, but that's basically where the motion stands. All we're doing is voting, the probably simplest way is just to discuss and vote, and not really play politics with it, but, I mean, however y'all wanna do it. There's a motion on the table, I mean, you can say, no one's here saying, not saying you can't say no, no one's here not saying you can't say yes, you can go how it is. This is just gonna create super legal.
Yeah.
It's, it's, if you, there's a motion and there's a second, there's another, right now, there's a second on a motion on a roll call vote. So if people don't, I mean, people don't want to vote for this, because they, if, like, if you wanna have, extend this so that we have another hearing, vote against this being approved today, that's, that's, and that's the easiest way to do it, so we don't have to spend twenty minutes doing this. If you want to not hear anymore about it, and you wanna move forward on it, then you vote forward, and that's the simplest way to do this. No, we, we can tone it down, it's just gonna go away, right? Let's bring it back up.
We have to bring it back up and have two initial hearings, right, the reason.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so. It would not pass, we voted down, it would not pass, you're fair.
So, there, there are two, at least two, and several actually, subsidiary motions that, first of all, we've got the motion on the table and the amendment to do a roll call vote, so that we can, that's what's on the table now, if I understand, and I don't think there was a preliminary motion made for that. So.
So as of right now, I mean, if we're gonna use Robert Schur's order, let's know what Robert Schur's order is, let's be ready to use it. So the second on the, the second is met, so we have a, we have a vote, and we, we don't necessarily have to have discussion on amendment, we can have discussion on amendment. I find the motion, the motion on table right now is have a roll call vote.
You're talking about a roll call moment on the amendment?
On, that's the amendment that we have a roll call vote.
No, the, it'll be a roll call vote on that, on the.
On the original. Reading of the second, yeah, the second reading.
Now, after we deal with that.
I thought we had an amendment on this.
That's the. That's the. Because Cole made it, he didn't make it to be a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed, there was discussion, we decided.
Okay, we have a second, we still have time for discussion.
Yes, yes, yes.
You want to discuss, is that right, somebody was sitting there.
Yes, okay.
So this is the time, this is the time just to discuss on whether we wanna have a roll call vote, and then it moves back to your discussion on the original motion, and that's where you wanna discuss that original motion, if that makes sense.
I have no discussion on the amendment or roll call.
Okay.
But I do have discussion on the.
So, any further discussion on the amendment to have a roll call vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed, okay, we're going to have a roll call vote on.
We go back to the.
We go back to that, so this is the time, we're having a discussion.
But wait, we're gonna have a roll call vote, yes.
The roll.
All right, got you, all right, let's move forward, sorry.
Um, I've been asked by quite a few people to bring this up, and I don't know the answer, but hopefully, it won't take that long to begin this one. But, um, I've been asked, can Councilman Eagle vote, or is it a conflict because he does sell alcohol on the street or the town street? So is it a conflict for him to vote?
He would be served if he's managed. It's not an event, this is, this is voting for like an event, my establishment doesn't sell.
You don't sell on premise.
No, we don't sell on, like, premise, we, um, we donated to terrible causes that have helped out with a lot of things, as the event does.
Would you, would there be any danger of getting from providing alcohol beverages to the event?
I, is, if it's on my property, I can, I can do whatever I want, as long as I'm within Tennessee, right, absolutely. As far as me having, and you know this, because you went to the same training I did at the Drug Coalition sponsored, um, I cannot, there cannot be any alcohol on my premise online, or any new restaurants cannot go off my premises, period, that is not, you can ask Chief Davis on that, he very aware of the regulation on that. It's very common, like, you cannot, you have to follow, Tennessee's got pretty strict rules, like, this is why we're doing this, so that we have a control of this, so that it's, this makes it safer for, it's not, we're trying to make it safer, right now, there's no, there's no controls, there's zero, zilch controls.
Oh, that, my, my, my question is, will you benefit from?
Excuse me, may I interject, you're saying there's no control, right now, the ordinance says there is no open alcohol liquor on public properties, so there is control now. This, this is about changing that so you can have it on public property.
This is about making it so that what we're doing isn't going outside of these, these areas, do I benefit?
No, you're changing the ordinance as it stands, which right now says there's no alcohol on public properties or buildings. So you would be changing what is the ordinance right now, just, I just want everybody to be clear about that.
Yes, we are changing it so that we are, we are operating within a fair area, where we are operating, where we are known area, and we're operating within a legal realm. That is exactly what we're doing, because the vast two benefits that this organization did, um, they technically got a special permit from the city, and the city said, hey, you can sign off, that wasn't a documented thing from the city council or anything, but we all voted to say it was okay. This just puts a, this basically puts a number on it and a code that doesn't basically say, for example, if I finish, that we're just favoring the River City Ball for this, or that we're just gonna favor this, this puts it so that it falls under a special area, I mean, he wrote it. I don't think there's any.
Just, again, to be transparent about what you're talking about, this is the reason that we are doing this, because the first two did not have this permit in place, and so they were done without, they were actually, the ordinance that said you can't have open liquor or beer was the ordinance in place, and that was not changed, so they were violating that ordinance the first two, I just want us to be transparent about this, that's why this came.
The people who benefit, just to answer, you want to know who benefits from the, this thing?
You're diverting, you're diverting.
Okay.
Because I've been asked.
Mr. Cole, you're diverting, I want everybody to understand why we're doing this, it's why this came up, because the first two were done against the ordinance at the time, and we realized we have to change the ordinance in order to continue doing this.
That's exactly what I just said, so good, we agree.
Uh, no, that's not what you just said, but anyway, we'll.
Are we doing this so this, I don't know, I, I.
Well, I can't, I can't be at River City, go to Cole's, and then walk back up the street with something about Cole's.
Exactly, and you can't go from River City into my place and then walk back up the street. You have to stay within these boundaries, you have to stay within these boundaries, that is the law. You cannot go on, the first year, could we go, we couldn't go on the courthouse, the first year. And so there was a boundary there, and there's, there's boundaries, and I definitely, I definitely implore you to look up, go to TABC and look up regulations and how this work, this is very common. This doesn't turn us into Beale Street or Las Vegas, this is like, this is just allowing people to be adults. It's not, not family friendly, there's many children, there's many people, parties, organizations that participate. But if you want to talk about who benefits from this, it's charities who benefit from them. And if people don't want to drink, then don't vote.
For the great day, for the great order.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you're not gonna go to this, don't go to Old Charlie's. Don't go to.
Are you addressing the people who's broke, who are you addressing right now?
I'm addressing anyone who's opposed to this. I'm, I'm addressing the council right now, because this is the council. So that's, that's who I'm addressing, so if you don't, if you don't want to drink, don't go to it. And, and, you know, that's just how it is, and you can vote right now, you can vote this down and say, let's, let's kill this, and let's look at it again. We can do that right now, that's, while we're here. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote it down, but if you do, that's fine, I don't take no hard feelings to it, I have no conflict interest for it.
We're not asking you to vote it down, we're just asking you if you can give the public more time to address it.
If you vote it, and, and that will, that's how you can do it, is you vote it down.
Our table.
You may make a motion to table it, or to, table is not it, but to postpone indefinitely, or postpone indefinitely, or, if you table it, that technically means to put it to the end of the meeting tonight. But all of that was, well, I'm sure all of those can be made as a subsidiary motion to the main motion, which is the.
What I, what I find in this, just last weekend, they announced two was gonna be benefiting, and there was a lot of different organizations that went into this to benefit it, and they have to choose one, they can't choose everything.
I'm sorry, what are we talking about now?
Talking about the River City Ball. And so before this choice was made, and it may have benefited one of these nonprofits, it may not, before this choice is made, there was not a public think about this. Now there's a public think about it.
I'm not sure this is just about the River City Ball, I think what they were addressing earlier has nothing to do, really, with the River City Ball.
They didn't even know who was the.
They didn't even know who, what you're talking about, probably.
I'm just asking to give the public as much time as we need to make sure this is what the public thinks, as we tell our motion. I'm asking the post comment, not indefinitely, just the post comment, so we can have a little bit more discussion.
So do you, is your motion to postpone it to the next meeting, or?
That's what I proposed, yeah, postpone it to the next meeting, have another property, if that's possible.
That, this does take precedence by understanding, whatever we're doing.
That motion has to be seconded and approved by a majority of the council to.
So we can deal with that.
But what would have to happen, though, per Roberts Rule's order, is this would have to be, this motion that is standing on the table right now has to be closed, and that would be new. That's not an amendment, that's a completely different motion, you can't, you can't just, yeah, so that's what would have to happen.
I think what she's asking is, can we give the public more time? So anyway, we have a motion on the table to postpone to.
No, no, we have to.
You would have to withdraw.
I would have to withdraw.
She, you can make a subsidiary motion to a motion that's on the table, and again, the council has to approve that to defer the main motion to the next meeting.
Your motion would have to have a second.
And it's debated, we're debating on, let's say, if you were to continue definitely, so that's been debatable before vote, maybe it's a second.
So we have a motion, we need a second.
If it gets a second.
To postpone to the.
In order to discuss it, we have to have a second.
All right, so Barbara.
To discuss.
You're making a motion to postpone it, do you have to be specific on that?
To discuss the.
For the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
I second it.
Okay, no, another. Do I hear a second to the motion to postpone to the next meeting to have a public here? Bill, the second, so, okay, now we can have discussion about that motion if it's first, so that's over to the other. Any discussion about postponing this to the next meeting, so the public can come and speak to it again? Okay, if there's no discussion, do I hear, okay. All in favor of postponing it to the next meeting, so the discussion can continue? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, now we go back to the main motion that was made to pass this on second reading. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
We don't have a roll call vote.
Oh, roll call, excuse me, okay. All right, last matter, what?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canapple?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Councilman Reese?
No.
Passes order two. That passes, then we go to new business. Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we all know Assistant Chief Brown retired last month, and that left a spot open for a new patrolman. So we took applications, and we had roughly 20 applications. Out of those 20 applications, we had two certified, 18 non-certified. I did eight interviews for people, narrowed down to one person, I put that person's application in front of you. He is a certified officer, and that's who I would recommend that we move forward with hiring tonight. If y'all have any questions, feel free to ask.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Thank y'all very much, guys, appreciate you.
Mr. Ricky, your Turner Lift Station bids.
Yeah, uh, we had 10 companies that requested information to be in, and we only received two sealed bids on October 1st. And Wascon had the lowest bid, so. I just had two, two quotes, if y'all want to hear what they were, I mean, one of them was way higher than the other one. But Wascon was. The Wascon bid was 18,200, and JS Herring Company was 47,000. Quite a bit of difference.
Motion, we take the 18,200.
No brainer.
That's an easy one.
It is.
We had to take that one, okay, thank you, and then the final item is.
I would need to vote on that.
Okay, well, it was a little bit, okay. But you had a motion, so, okay. Any discussion on that? Are y'all in favor of the low bid on that?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the final item is the health officer nomination. I think, last time it sounded.
I recommend Dr. Duke for nominating.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a question for you, Dr. Duke. You know, I like to pick one. So, one thing you did say, and you said that you were gonna definitely hold everything to a T. And, and I, I understand that, I think it's very commendable. What I want to make sure, that my only concern is, is that is ramping up to that, as opposed to, like, going from not having anything to all of a sudden something, because that happened once with the building inspector, and it was caused a lot of issues, so that's, that's just, you understand my concern on that, as far as, like, just, you know, trying, trying to work with people to get up to that area, because we, we do need it, and I agree we need it, but also, I just want to make sure that we're not just going hardcore, hitting the force on it, but letting people know, hey, this is how it is now, this, you got some time to fix what it is that you need to fix.
Yes, I, I, I think that, you know, basically, a lot of the, the things that happens with, with the health officer has to be in his medical or in his opinion, and his judgment, better judgment, based on his, his medical judgment, or his judgment as far as public health is concerned. And there are leeways in that, that, you know, you, you don't, but, you know, when it comes to, it comes down to whether it's the safety for the health of, of the public, I'm gonna go with what's safe and health, safety and health. That, you know, there are ways sometimes to get around some of these things, there's gray areas here as well. But, but when it comes down to whether it's gonna be safety of the public health or not, I'm gonna go with safety to public health over what my opinions would be, or what, or what I would want, or what I don't want. Now, I guess that's what I was trying to say when I said I was gonna be strict with this.
So if it's like a very strict health concern, you're gonna be very strict with it, which I agree with you on that. If it's something that just falls under that realm of the safety of the health inspector, and you can work with people, that's my, that was my question, will you be able, will you advocate to work with people?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And there are some things now, that, that, there's some safety issues that, that's not negotiable. I can imagine, I mean, that there, there, there are things with research has shown, certain things has to be done. And then the part of agriculture, too, they have a whole source of, of knowledge that you, you know, things that they, you know, they recommend to be done, and guidance for me, for making decisions on. So, so, but I think I, I had to be, we have a situation where I was temporarily appointed, and I think in this particular case, we made some, some decisions with that, that, that still put everybody within the realm of safety, as far as the health is concerned, but yet it wasn't strictly by our, our ordinance, I guess, as I was, and that was, that was a decision I could make, as far as it is, that making a little league like on that. So I think I've already kind of demonstrated that a bit, as, as a temporary health officer.
I think what he did with the goat situation, very creative, and within the, the ordinance.
Hardly made, everybody was happy.
Well, it was, yeah, right, well, I hope everybody's happy, but, but that wasn't my intent, to make everybody happy. My intent was to make sure that it, it fit within the health, that's, that was my duty, that's.
Basically moved the goats to the other side, where there was ample, and they had it two million feet away, and all the orders was on.
And, and I actually worked with the gentleman, and used some old trigonometry, figuring out how to get things in the right spot, so it's, it fits most all the ordinances, so.
Great, I want a question, yes. At the last meeting, you had mentioned something, I know Dr. Duke is not gonna charge for this, but that we might need to set a rate for it? Does that need to be done now? For, you know, just in case Dr. Duke's dissatisfied.
Would that be something we need to just bring up for another meeting?
That's what I was asking, I didn't know if you need to do it now, or?
It'd be good to have it instantly, kind of, with that, yeah.
I'm not sure, if he, if you would have to give it to me, and then make a tribute back, which would, the lady would give it back.
I don't, yeah, I don't think you would.
From the accounting side, I would appreciate if you did do that.
I'm sorry.
Just my opinion.
Can you give us a, at the next meeting, an idea of what you think would be unreasonable, so, before that? Just, you don't have to tell me right now, just thinking.
I, I just have to look it up and see what other cities do, I mean, I have no, he would probably know more than I do.
Well, I don't, yeah, no, I mean, so, Fucis still have a health officer, but I don't know whether they would pay him on a per case basis, or an hourly basis, we.
I think a per case basis is probably reasonable, I would think a hundred dollars or something like that, but I don't know.
Just, yeah.
Maybe like, what do you think of an hourly rate for a doctor would be?
Well, I think, I think the separate. Well, we set rate for permit, we, we set that, I think it's $50, or $50, I think we set the rate for permit for $50, and the rate for the inspection was $50, I think, so, I don't know that you're gonna pay me more than what you, the city got for the, I'm just saying.
So just whatever, yeah.
And then, again, you might want to establish a rate if, and hopefully the unlikely event that they had to come to court and has to buy it, then you might have an hourly rate for that, for that would happen, so.
Yeah, or even the council, and, you know, they do the call and ask for, you know, for questions, or whatever, to make a decision, or something. I make a motion to table till next month, so we have more information. Table setting is fee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, because there was, yeah, there wasn't anything on it, so, we can bring it up under new business, but, but I don't think we have to set a fee today.
And I'll bring something, I'll bring something, I'll work with everybody to bring something for the next meeting, so it's a good reason.
So we can put that in the agenda next meeting. Any, we got a first and second, you want to leave? Oh, y'all have a pass. All right, thank you, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, guys.